Welcome. It's 7:00 PM on Wednesday, November 5th, 2025. The Tuilla City Council is meeting in a business meeting being held at Tuilla City Hall in the council chambers located at 90 North Main Street in Tuilla, Utah. We are also streaming this electronically on the Tuilla City YouTube channel. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our second item is a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gochis.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
And Councilman Brady, and I'm also present. Item three is the Mayor's Youth Recognition Awards. This is presented by Mayor Debbie Nguyen.
Thank you, Chairman and Council, and good evening. It's so great to see the seats full. I mean, this doesn't happen very often. Usually, it's two or three, and so I think they're all here for this portion of the meeting because this is the best. This is the best part. So I am honored tonight to be able to recognize two youth in our community who are wonderful people who do wonderful things. And sometimes we forget to recognize the good things that happen. It seems like our world is full of negatives sometimes, but if we get rid of that negative part, we can find good people all around. And we're very, very grateful to partner with the schools in our district, not only the school district, public schools there, but the charter schools. We partner with them, and the teachers and the administrators are very good to help us to recognize and honor these young people in our community. So tonight, normally, I would invite our Chief of Police up to help me give out these awards, and I've asked him if he would let me do something more special tonight. And I would like to invite our newly-elected Tuilla City Mayor, Marisa Manzio, to come down and help me tonight. Awesome. To say I'm thrilled is just not even close to how I feel. I'm so excited. So excited. You know, I only get...
I'm a little overwhelmed.
I know. Just how you feel? Yeah, just how you feel. It's kind of a little bittersweet moment. I only get to do this two more times. I cry at anything. You know how it goes. All right. Tonight, what I'm going to do is introduce the names of our award winners, and we would ask that person to come up here and stand while I read some really excellent information about this person that was written by the person who nominated them. And we've got a special backpack there that's filled with things from some of the businesses in our community and a Tuilla City puzzle. It's awesome, a puzzle in there, and some other nice things. So our first Mayor's Youth Recognition Award winner tonight is Kyle Yushio. Did I say it right? I am so excited to let you know that Kyle attends Stansbury High School. I've got lots of grandkids there. Yeah, Stansbury High School. And Kyle was nominated by his drama teacher, Glenn Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter, do you happen to be here tonight? Sometimes they come in, and I don't know that they're here, and I always like to recognize them because we couldn't do this without the teachers. So your parents, I think they're over here tonight, and they are Brandon and Sarah. Good to have you here tonight. So let me tell you about Kyle. Kyle is a great student who has been involved in the drama program for three years now. He is a hard worker and is always willing to do the extra work in order to make his character more believable. Outside of class, he is a drama officer and is in charge of the theater publicity. He is always one step ahead and gets things done before Mr. Carpenter has to ask for them. I'm sure he loves that. That's awesome. Kyle is always willing to offer help and support to students that he sees struggling or who are having a bad day. He is also willing to tutor students who are struggling in different classes. He helps organize the junior high school participants of the drama club since they are offering a combined club this year. He shows qualities of good citizenship every day. You know, it's one thing to be smart and talented because you've got both of those down easy. It's hard for people to be kind and support others, and that is what is so important, that you recognize the importance of other people. You show them the love and the support, and that's what we all want to be like. So, good job. Congratulations to you. And after we do this next award, we're going to all go take pictures. So we've got a certificate there for him and an award, and I'll let you sit down while I announce winner number two, award winner number two. The Mayor's Youth Recognition Award goes to Angélie Dyson. Okay, Angélie. Stansbury High School, can tell. Stansbury High School. She was also nominated by her drama teacher, Glenn Carpenter. She is the daughter of Chris and Dottie Dyson. There they are. There they are. Awesome. Angélie is one of the amazing presidents in the high school drama club. This summer, she took the lead in directing the Stansbury High School Children's Workshop. She is also actively involved in the show choir. Awesome. Angélie is a great student leader, and all of the students involved in the drama program respect her and feel welcomed to the department. Angélie is someone who truly cares about the other students. She will reach out to someone who is hurting and will ask how she can help them. She has a huge heart and wants to make sure that everyone around her is taken care of. She's a great example of having good character and showing service. Same thing, smart, talented. They got all that down, but they got the best part down, and that is taking care of other people. So thank you for the service you provide to those others.
Of course.
And I'll let you take that and your certificate. So we've all heard the little thing about it takes a village. It does. It does take a village to raise our kids. But you know what else it takes? It takes awesome family members and friends and neighbors that you participate and you interact with in the world. So I would like to have the parents, if you would please stand. We want to give you a round of applause for raising such wonderful, wonderful kids. Thank you. Thank you to the family members, all the brothers and sisters that are here, and any other family and friends that are here to support these kids. We appreciate you so very much. So this, as you heard when Chairman Brady announced our meeting tonight, that this is on YouTube, so it's like live tonight. So you've been on TV already. But it will also be available on YouTube, so any of your friends that didn't get to see it tonight can go watch it at any time. The trick is, though, when you get onto YouTube, search Tuilla City Channel. If you just put Tuilla City, you're going to get a million things. Tuilla City Channel, we'll go right to it. You look at our city council meeting, and it will be there. But we would also like to take your photo with the city council. We're going to meet out in the rotunda here, and if you will maybe give your little backpack there to someone else to hold for you and bring your certificate, and we want that out there. We're going to take a picture, and then we're going to put you all over social media. And then we're also going to send it to the local newspaper. The transcript bulletin will run it for us there, so everybody will know how wonderful you are. Congratulations very much for receiving the award tonight. You're great, great people. Thank you. And anybody can come out and take pictures if you would like. If you would like to come on out through your cameras and take pictures.
Okay, we're going to move on to item four, which is our public comment period. This is the time for the public to address the council. Before I open it up to anyone in person, we received an email to our public comment email. So I'm going to read that. It says, "Good evening. I hope this email finds everyone well. I'm a community member who needs to discuss the option of bringing back the TNR program through the Tuilla City Animal Shelter, especially now with the new mayor about to take office. I'm not sure if you are aware of the issues the community is running into with lack of resources for our animals. While volunteering with the only resource that the county has for cats, I see too many stories of people doing horrible things to these animals because they have no other options. There are indoor cats being taken to the canyons and dumped, cats being abandoned by their family when moving, and feral colonies becoming too large to control. The animal shelters in multiple cities within the county are taking their cats to this nonprofit rescue and not offering financial assistance at all, putting the entire problem back into the community's hands and watch the city wash their hands of the problem. While I understand that there are budgets to take into consideration, I also understand that these animals are a part of this community. Our responsibility and with the lack of programs is only making things worse. While our city is growing and new parks are being built, it may be time to reallocate some of those funds to ensure living things get the help we owe them. The small amount it would take for our community to once again fund the TNR program would help tremendously. A single unneutered male is capable of fathering up to 2,500 kittens in one year with the potential for exponentially more offspring in the long run. That would mean, since the program was cut in 2022-ish, that one cat has turned into at least 7,500-plus, and we all know there are more than one unneutered male cat running around. The end of the TNR program has literally added thousands of..." They said "stay cats" to our community. I've reached out to different offices, and I feel like I get the runaround. I'm proud to be from Tuilla, but I'm very disappointed that our community that is known for discarding their animals on Drew Bay Road in front of the animal shelter in Upsettlement Canyon. I would love to have the opportunity to discuss this and show how this one program could change this for the better. I contacted the city council to add this to the agenda and was denied. I was told to contact the mayor's office, and they wouldn't help me since Animal Services budget was under the police department. Even though the mayor is the one who approves their budget, I was not allowed to meet with her. This is a big issue we need to work on, and the TNR program is the bare minimum our animals deserve. But our community needs our city to take some responsibility and do their part in this, too. I look forward to talking to someone soon. Sincerely, Tricia Armijo." And then she left her phone number. Okay. If it's just to you, I don't think we need to read it into the... And if it's on the ... The Planning Commission gets public comments, too, so we're only reading the city council ones that come to our public comment email. So, yeah, I didn't see that one. Okay, so the public comment for those here, we ask that you state your name into the mic. You keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then you sign the paper by shiloh. The time is now the public's. Okay, seeing no one come forward, I will close the public comment period. We will move on to item five, which is the Small Business Development Center presentation. This is presented by Jess Clifford, the SBDC Director, Tuilla Region.
Thank you. It's great to be with you again. I can't believe it's that time of year already, but I'm excited to show you what we've been able to achieve this year with your support. If you'll just direct your attention to the slide presentation, I promise to be brief as well. We could go to the next slide. Thank you. This represents our activity to date for the year 2025. This year, we have assisted 165 clients who have come in for help with a small business concern. And that represents 361 hours of time either in counseling with them or in supportive service. So that also includes things like market research from our state team. It also includes help with business plans, loan packages, things of that nature. And then we've also, through these clients that we've been able to serve, generated 45 new positions and jobs in the city. The financial impact to our valley has been just a little over $3,700,000, and that includes capital that has been secured through loans and grants or investment as well as increased sales. That number is also reported by the businesses themselves by survey. So that's what they have reported back to us. I also included at the bottom there a couple of charts just to show you a comparison year to year. We've done this for a while now, and I thought it would be interesting to see. The services rendered represents three different services. Jobs created, which is in red, counseling hours, which is in gold, and then the clients served. And so, as you can see, the counseling hours are way up. Everything else is kind of steadily growing. We took a little bit of a dip in the clients that came in in 2024. The chart to the... Next to it there, to my right, your left, would be the financial impact that we've reported year to year. 2024 was a little different. We had a large capital project that happened that year through one of our clients, and we were able to help contribute to that, help them get that funding. And I would be happy to name that for you afterward, but I can't do it publicly because of SBA confidentiality. But we had a really large capital project happen that year, which accounts for the spike. But you'll notice that we're on a trajectory upward that is sustained by normal activity and sales increases. So we're really happy to see that as well. We could go ahead, move forward. This is simply... I wanted to share with you also, this is the hours rendered through the SBDC to these clients. We started tracking it in 2024 in this way and comparing it year to year. And I'm just showing you this chart so that you can see that the number of people and the time that's being invested is going up at about 15% to 20% over last year, which we're thrilled with on the one hand, but we're also working hard to provide more resources to be able to cover that. So that's being covered through an AI-driven self-service training module that's up now for the internet. I've talked about that before, but every client that registers with us gets a lifetime for free account with this tool that we call the Entrepreneurial Academy, and it's available throughout the state. And it allows them to go in and to learn about any aspect of small business that they want to and to interact with that. So we've been able to utilize that in some ways. And then we've also been able to partner with other institutions that provide kind of specialty services like analytics or market research and that kind of thing that hasn't hit our office directly as it kind of did before. And so we're mitigating that, but I just wanted you to see that business activity and interest in a business is on the upswing in the city. People are interested in starting, and I want to say that they're not all single-man micro businesses out of their homes either. We're seeing people come in who are wanting to start manufacturing positions or jobs in companies, people who are wanting to take their business and grow it. And so we're really excited about that possibility, too. And I will say that we do... As you look at these numbers, just to give you a perspective, about 70% of the people that we serve are from Tuilla City proper, okay, even though these numbers cover the county. Now, next, I wanted to talk about... I wanted to show you, kind of put a face to this for you a little bit. Every year, we select a small business to recognize, our Small Business of the Year. And this year, we selected a business called Christians Draft Lines and Maintenance. And we make the selection not just based on how well the business does financially or jobs created, even though that's a factor, but we also try really hard to take a look and take into account the journey that this business owner has traveled and the things that they've done to be successful, the amount of work that they put in. And this is a really neat story, and so if we could go to the next slide, I'd like to just let them speak for themselves in a short video. Maybe.
Beer is essentially liquid food, and so it's going to have waste. And wet line cleaning does is it eliminates all of that waste. So my name's Christian Fell, and I'm from here in Utah. I was originally born out in Salt Lake, but I've moved out here to Tuilla about four or five years ago. I am a recovering addict. I have about six years under my belt of being clean. I started my journey with drug court. In the process of being in drug court, I also attended inpatient treatment over at Odyssey House, and that's where I found my love for culinary and food. They put me through a program where I could actually not only learn how to work in a kitchen but to run a kitchen. After completing Odyssey House and working over there, I got into sober living, where I also became a housing manager. As the housing manager, I started to delve into, you know, maybe I can be in charge of things. Maybe I am meant to do something greater. So I started working here at Bonneville Brewery, and that's when I kind of noticed the opportunity when it comes to line cleaning. So I started to do some research for it, started to look into the possibility of what type of equipment I would need, how much that would cost, what type of licensing that would take into place, and that's what led me over to the county office. After contacting the county office, they sent me over to the SBDC. That's where I met Jess Clifford. He gave me the roadmap to getting my business license and kind of getting my foot in the door. Within a week, I went out and I got my license. I went and got a loan for some of my equipment, and that's how draft lines was started. What line cleaning does is it eliminates all of that waste. The waste can also affect your beer. It affects the sellability. It affects the flavor profile. It affects the mouth feel. It affects everything that goes in through your beer. The goal of cleaning the draft system is so that you can have that same type of quality beer that you get out of the bottle. Also can help eliminate the waste that goes into the system because with a clean draft system, you have less foaming, less things like that going into it. And so typically, you want to get 126 glasses out of your keg, right? With a dirty system, you're only going to get like 70, maybe? And so a clean system will actually help make it so that you're increasing profits and decreasing your waste. The SBDC has helped me with amazing amount of resources with Wildcats Micro Fund Grants, with grants through Utah County, this event that we have right here. Everybody there is super nice. They're super helpful, and the resources that they have there have definitely helped me launch my business.
Thank you. That's one example of many.
Beer is essentially liquid food, and so it's going to have waste. And wet line cleaning...
The hardest part of this is choosing the business every year, but I want to thank this group and this council for the opportunity to be able to...
...does is it eliminates all of that...
And to be able to help these businesses and to be able to see these stories, countless stories, and to see people come in who... Some of them are at the end of their rope, and to see them take a hold of something and own it and end up like this at the end of the year. And so, again, thank you for your support. Are there any questions that I can answer at all about our activity this year? Okay, again, thank you very much. Sorry, I would just point to the report that you have in front of you. There's a small section below that refers to custom fit through Tuilla Tech, and that's simply referring to those that we have helped, those employers that we have helped cover the cost of training for and the impact that we've had there. So thank you.
Can I just make a comment about that?
Yes, please.
We, you know, I help with economic development. It's been one of my assignments, and it's been great to just be able to take businesses over there. You guys are always welcoming and very, you know, accepting and complimentary, and I know that we've had comments from many of the... Business development is important in the community, and we've had a lot of comments from them saying how helpful it was to go over there and work through the custom fit. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. We're glad to be part of the team. We really are.
Thank you, Jess. We'll move on to item six. We're actually going to... Item six and seven, we're going to present as one item. We'll have Andrew present it. We did discuss this in our work meeting, but I'll read these. So item six is a public hearing in motion on ordinance 2025-29, in ordinance of Tuilla City reassigning the land use designation for approximately 10 acres located at approximately 900 South Main Street, south side of SR36 from medium-density residential to high-density residential. And then item seven is a public hearing in motion on ordinance 2025-30, in ordinance of Tuilla City to amend the zoning map, reassigning the zoning for approximately 38 acres located at approximately 900 South Main Street, south side of SR36, from R17 Residential Zoning District to MR8 PUD, multifamily residential, and R17 residential zoning districts, and establishing the conditions of the 1 O'Clock Hill PUD. This is presented by Andrew Agar, the Community Development Director.
Thank you, council. I'll be briefing my presentation as you've already discussed this at length in your previous meeting. This is two applications. We have a land use map amendment and a zoning map amendment. Both applications will affect the approximately 38-acre parcel highlighted in red on your aerial photograph. The property is immediately south of SR36, southwest of Settlement Canyon Road, and immediately north of the southern Tuilla boundary. unit per seven, one dwelling unit for seven thousand square foot lots. As you can see on the zoning map, there is an abundance of zoning districts around the property. To the north, we have general commercial and R one seven. To the northeast, we have R one twelve. We have some RR one and MU one sixty to the south, and then to the southwest, we have uh some MR twelve and some general commercial zoning. The applications are requesting to change approximately ten acres of property to the HDR designation in order to facilitate a zoning map amendment request to the MR eight zoning district. And then the zoning map amendment itself is to change the zoning of the property to MR eight PUD for the uh ten acres at the center, and then R one seven PUD to the north and the south. The PUD is a planned unit development overlay, which is attached to the underlying zoning districts, and it proposes new standards for developments for the properties within the within the area. Some of the conditions of the PUD would be to reduce the lot size from seven thousand square feet to three thousand five hundred square feet, to reduce minimum lot width at front setback from sixty feet to forty feet, to reduce rear yard setback from twenty feet to fifteen feet, and side yard from six to five feet, and then reduce the minimum dwelling size of one thousand one hundred twenty-five square feet to one thousand square feet. That would affect the R one seven PUD. These are some images provided by the applicant of the type of structures they wish to build on the smaller cottage lot cottage homes, cottage home lots. And then the MR eight PUD doesn't provoke, doesn't propose as many changes as the R one seven, but it does propose a reduction in minimum lot width from thirty-five feet to twenty feet. Uh, interior yards would have a rear yard setback of twenty, of twelve feet, and then lot coverage would be increased to sixty-two percent. And then they're also requesting some reductions in the requirement of brick and stone on the front of the town home buildings. This item did go to Planning Commission on October eighth. A public hearing was held and public comment was taken. The Planning Commission recommended against the HDR, HDR, high-density land use resi- designation. And then they also held a public hearing at their October eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting, and recommended against the MR eight PUD zone and in favor of the R one seven PUD zone. Uh, that is the particulars of the application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those for you.
Are there any questions or comments? As I mentioned, we discussed this in depth in our work meeting. Um, both of these items require a public hearing, so we're gonna treat them as their own items now. It was just easier for Andrew to present that, adding them together. So I will open this up to the public. We asked, item six will open to the public. We ask that you state your name into the mic. You keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then you sign the paper by Shiloh. The time is now the publics.
I was at the last meeting concerning this. I think all of you know how how I feel about this. Uh, I live on the opposite side of where this development will be, the blue house on the corner of twelve twenty south. Uh, things have not changed really since the people before that was wanting to build uh next to me in the vacant lot as far as the road is concerned. The roads are still fifty-five miles an hour trying to get onto the road. There have been many accidents, not only at my corner, but at three o'clock and at nine o'clock, there have been accidents because of the speed of the road. Uh, UDOT has yet to decrease that speed. The mountainside there is loose, almost gravel. Bigger rocks down into my yard, it's loose gravel. Um, you can see the mountain over the years that we have been here. You can see how the mountain has continued to come down, that plants that were there are now bare. I hope you understand what I mean. It's it's getting higher, so the the mountain is not stable. And to have this project there uh is dangerous, especially if there was a earthquake. The deer, I have not seen as many deer this year as usual on the road. Uh, I mean, on that's in that section, and I don't know if it's because they have more water up higher and they're not coming down, but where are the deer going to go? Uh, they talked about all these homes. Where's the school? How are the children going to cross the road to get to the stu- schools, which are on the other side of Main And the parking, as it is now, people park on the side of the road to go on up the mountain. Where is the parking going to be? The water, I know water has been set apart for the for that area, but we are in a drought situation and we're losing trees. Twill is supposed to be the best city in the state for trees. We're losing trees all the time. And these trees mainly have to be fed by water coming off the mountain. My time is up. Anyway, I am, I understand we need more housing. I understand that, but these concerns are legitimate. Too many have died on that road already. Too many have been injured. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you state your name into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Rebecca Smith.
Rebecca Smith, thank you. And then just sign that paper by Shiloh. Thanks, Rebecca. All right, the time is still the publics.
My name is Jen Hinton, and I'm here as a resident that lives in the subdivision just adjacent to this. I live on Heritage Hill Drive, which just is off of Settlement Canyon Road by the Masonic Temple. I've lived up there sixteen years. I am a proud, proud homegrown resident of Twilla, and I'm here to speak up on some safety concerns that I have as someone who lives on SR thirty-six, right where this is going. And I know that it is zoned and that houses are going to be going there. I'm here to speak out on anything that increases the number of houses there. I've talked about traffic. I know that the developer said there was a traffic study done, uh, and if there was nothing found, I would greatly disagree with that. Like I said, I bought my home sixteen years ago on Heritage Hill Drive. I back up onto the Pioneer Cemetery. I have that a little bit as a buffer onto SR thirty-six. And um, I also grew up just off of Coleman right there at the bus garage. So of my fifty-one years, thirty-four have been spent within point two miles of this piece of property. And um, I deal with that traffic every day. My concern is with traffic. It will be impacted, and we will be looking at putting a light at Settlement Canyon. And you will also be looking at, um, I know that the city, at least to my understanding, doesn't have control over the speed limit. That is UDOT. So it's at thirty-five miles an hour when I come out of Settlement Canyon Road onto the highway. Some of those exits in the development will be coming out at fifty-five miles per hour. That's a big concern. We have a, we all know we have an increase in the number of trucks, double belly dumps carrying aggregate on that road. I've been keeping track. We have ten to twenty an hour come down that road. Okay, that's a lot. That's a lot more than there were even five years ago. It's drastically different. The other thing is I uh will speak out against any change in moving homes closer to the road. I had my husband measure our back, the closest we sit to SR thirty-six is a hundred and twenty-nine feet. They're asking for twenty to twenty-five feet off of SR thirty-six. You cannot carry on a conversation in my backyard as trucks combine really with really any traffic. It's very close. I understood that when I bought there, and there is an increase in traffic, and there's going to be growth. I'm well aware of that, but I really would like the council to consider, as I expressed to the Planning Commission, the reasonability of putting more homes there. The other, the other thing with that is um, there is a sign restricting engine brakes coming into town that is not enforced. I've also been keeping track of that. I am awoken at six twenty almost every morning with engine brakes, and it's constant from here on out. We live, those trucks aren't going anywhere. I know that, and that's part of the, our business and economic um, community here, but you need to realize that's not enforced. And those homes are sitting a hundred feet closer to the road than my house. So I'm gonna be brief and just also express my concern about school. That was brought up. My kids grew up in this subdivision. The school district does have to bus the elementary students across the highway. They are not required to bus junior high or high school students. So the students in our area, if they cannot get a ride, have to walk across that road. I want you to think about how many kids, these are homes that are catering to kids. They do not have to bus those students. How are those kids crossing? I was told by the bus garage, they are to walk to a light to cross. Where we live and where these homes are, they would have to walk without sidewalk, all the way down to Vine Street to cross. I also keep track of the number of dead deer and where they're located between the fueling station and Taco Time. It's gonna be a kid doing that. And that's my concern as a neighborhood. When we had teenagers, we tried to help one another get each other's kids to school, but you never know people's situation, but I'm very, very concerned about the traffic. I invited the Planning Commission, the developer, and I invite you to come spend an afternoon in my backyard and see the concern with with, especially with the big dump, with the big double belly dumps. We already had one that lost its brakes right at my house, where my house is located. I am concerned about how close they are to the road and the increased number. It will be a big difference in traffic um there with, especially with the speed limit. And that's, those are my concerns. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen tonight, too. I appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Kalani Mascherino, and I live on Two O'Clock Drive. Um, I think what uh part of the problem is with this development is when we zoom out, our, I live on Two O' Clock, I have to get out on Three O'Clock. Well, I don't have to. I choose to go out on Three O'Clock, because at least right there, you can see further down the road and try and shoot the gap to get out on the highway. So now we're gonna put a Holiday there with gas trucks and everything else. Then we're gonna put twenty-six townhouses on the south side. Well, then, as soon as we connect the three hundred and twenty-six acre industrial park on the other side of ten fifty, we connect it at twelve twenty and Timby, which I've been here when they promised that the the trucks and the, you know, deliveries and employees and everybody are not gonna use those roads. They're gonna come in on Twilla Boulevard. I call baloney. Um, they're gonna use those. Just, I was on Timby Monday night, and the traffic was outrageous. They did slow down, because we had to keep the peace officer there, but it's so busy right now, because it's a bottleneck right there. It's a bottleneck on Three O'Clock. It's a bottleneck on twelve twenty, and then we're gonna try to add even more. And then we did talk about the nature trail that is available to the public. Well, where is the public gonna park for that? Are they gonna park over at the Masonics? Are they gonna park at the Holiday and try to cross? Are they gonna, I just am so nervous about about it. I, in August of twenty twenty-three, I was in a car accident on nine hundred south, and someone pulled out in front of me, and I'm just trying to get home. Um, that February, my husband was trying to get home. Someone pulled out in front of him, and he, and we, so we lost that car, too. Well, a year ago, I had to have neck surgery to take care of that, and I'm still recovering from it. So we're just trying to get home, and we can't even get home on SR thirty-six the way it is now. Uh, there's no way we can quad, I don't even know. I can't do that much math this late at night, but how much more traffic it would be if you're considering two cars per home, two, I mean, two drivers, if we're saying two drivers per door, that's a lot of traffic. And then when Timmy moves back with his toys, like-
I think it's Johnny.
It, Johnny, Johnny and Timmy both move back, because things go south, and they move back with their toys. That's even more cars. So that's all I've got. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Kalani.
I love the south side.
You know, you really didn't have to remind them about Johnny coming back home.
Thank you. My name is Scott Dagelbeck, and I don't live in this area, but I'm glad these folks made the comments that they've made tonight, because I agree. I want to make a comment to the planning and zoning. It looked like they picked up on a couple of the things. And one of the things that bothers me, I just looked at it briefly, was the setbacks and the side yards. I, uh, and then you talk about going to a lot size of thirty-five hundred square feet. That's, that's pretty small lot size. I gotta tell you, it's not gonna have much uh room to breathe. So the traffic and the concerns that these folks have for their children, I agree with. And so I think we need a second look at the developers when they come in, if there's a plan. And it looks to me like once the foot's in the door, they say now we need the modification to go more. So be cautious and cognizant of that. The other thing that kind of bothers me is I'm familiar with the property, because I have friends who live out there, and it appears to me there's a lot of power lines going through that property. Now, I watched that house being built on Settlement Canyon Road, and I think it sat there for two, three years, a power line or whatever was right on top of it. Are we gonna have the same problem there that we saw on Settlement Canyon Road with regards to the power? So be careful, folks, on what we approve. Uh, more isn't always better. Thanks for your time.
Okay, so you know what else? Come forward. I will close the public hearing on this item. Any questions, comments from council before we, so in the work meeting, just to clarify, so we, we talked about this. The council, I think it's safe to say, agreed that it was too, too much of an increase for this area. Uh, that uh, the applicant asked that we table this so that they can take the feedback we gave them. So I, I'm willing to entertain a motion if we want to table it or-
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we table um items six and seven. Do you need me to read them?
I think we need to do a public hearing on seven, though, too, right, Matt, is what we had decided, because they're two separate items?
I think because they're two separate ones, it just will be cleaner if if we-
Okay, so let's just focus on six and then we'll-
Um, I'll, I don't have it up right now. Well, thank you. I'll make a motion to table item number six, a motion on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, in ordinance of Twilla City, reassigning the land use designation for approximately ten acres located at approximately nine hundred South Main Street, south side of SR thirty-six, from medium density residential to high density residential.
I'll second.
We have a motion to table from Councilwoman Goaches and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, and I vote aye to that.
Do we need to set a specific time that we're bringing it back, or?
From my understanding, the, the applicant was the one who asked us to table it, so I think it's in their court now.
Yeah, I, I, I think you could consider a date if you'd like to, but I think you can set it without a, table it without a date, if that's the route that the-
We could say no longer than a date, and that way it's not just sitting, because we voted on it already. Can we, wait, let's do it on the next one.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um, just, just a note, too, in the, in the paper, there's an incorrect address, so when it comes back, we should make sure that's correct.
Okay. Okay. And then we, item seven, we had a presentation on that.
Okay.
We are going to have a public hearing, though, as well, on this one. We are going to have a public hearing, though, as well on this one. It's a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2025-30. So the time is now the public's. We ask that you state your name into the mic, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then sign the paper by Shiloh. Time is now the public's.
That's Rebecca Smith. Since we need to, I do this two separate times. Anyway, all the same things. Traffic, schools, wildlife, the mountain coming down. You can see it. The rocks are showing up higher and higher every year. The plant life is not holding it, possibly because of the drought. It is infecting everything below it also. I was told by a plumber, when we had trouble with our water, that a stream used to go down 1220. And at times in the past, my yard at the side, on the, closer into Twilla City, I always had trouble north and southeast, west here. Anyway, the ground there used to be wetter, and my tall poplars, they're dying. The ground's not as wet as it used to be. The water's not coming down. You put units there, it's going to stop more water from coming down. I'm against this. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I will close the public hearing.
Chairman?
Yes.
I wonder if I could just give a couple of numbers out, just, just for your info that I pulled up here. These are numbers from UDOT that was taken in February of 2024. So they have, they have counted the traffic on Main Street at different sections of Main Street. So if we go from 1220 south to 400 south, every day, they are saying there is 13, over 13,000 vehicles. But they also can track buses or single-unit semi-trailers. There's 1,730 a day. Then if you look at how many are pulling more than one trailer, double trailers, in addition to these numbers, is 905. That is a lot of truck traffic. I mean, extensive. And, and as we have been working on for years and years and years, we keep getting a little closer, but the Mid Valley Highway, and we're not giving up the fight, but I did want you to know that we have now sent out by mail and by, by regular post office and by email to every one of our legislators, 79, I believe, representatives, 29 senators. We've also sent those letters to the Utah Transportation Commission members and to some administrative people at UDOT, telling them how important it is that we get this, this road funded to get those trucks off of Main Street. And, you know, it seems like huge numbers, but just trucks on Main Street between 600 North and 2,000 North, which includes SR-112, 1,000 North, that increases to over 3,000 trucks a day. That's what we see, and I, I feel your pain with the engine brakes. We are trying. We tick it all the time with the engine brakes. My worry is, you know, you hear them before they go down the hill, but I, I hear them coming by my office, the windows rattle, of how uncomfortable that is. We know we're never going to get all of those trucks off of Main Street, but, but we do know the importance, and we, we definitely are trying. And at the end of the day, it does feed into making a decision on any, any more development with housing along SR-36 until we can get some answers and some money. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? For the previous one, we, we should probably set a timeframe, right? The max timeframe before it comes back. So what's everyone comfortable with?
I think they are thinking about next meeting, but then again, if we don't put a date on it, then they can take another two weeks if they need to.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to rush them. You know what I mean?
I was thinking, like, within three months, end of January. That gives them plenty of time and...
Yeah.
Yeah. Everyone okay with that?
I'm okay.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion? Once again, the applicant asked that we table this item, so...
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2025-30, an ordinance of Twilla City amending the zoning map, reassigning the zoning for approximately 38 acres located at approximately 900 South Main Street, south side of SR-36, from R1 Residential Zone, R17 Residential Zoning District to MR8 PUD Multifamily Residential and R17 Residential Zoning Districts and establishing the conditions of the 1 O'Clock Hill PUD. And I move that we table this for three months, up to, no later than three months.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to table from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That is tabled. Okay, item eight is Resolution 2025-83, a resolution of the Twilla City Council approving a lease purchase agreement with PNC Bank National Association for the lease and purchase of a Pierce Velocity aerial platform fire truck. This is supplementing Resolution 2025-78, and it's presented by Shannon Wimmer, the Finance Director.
Good evening, council. You may remember on September 3rd, we passed a resolution for the build and construction and the seven-year lease for a new fire truck. In that lease, we, we will be paying a down payment to Sidens &amp; Martin, and they will also be building the truck. But we needed to amend that resolution to have PNC listed as the actual company we will be leasing with so that we can finalize this lease agreement for the truck. So this is just a resolution that's just updating from Sidens &amp; Martin to PNC Bank. The terms of the lease all remain the same. The payment terms stay the same. The purchase price stays the same. So this is just to amend that so that we can have what we need to complete this lease agreement.
Okay, any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a, make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-83, a resolution of Twilla City Council approving a lease purchase agreement with PNC Bank National Association for the lease and purchase of a Pierce Velocity aerial platform fire truck, supplementing Resolution 2025-78.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item nine is Resolution 2025-84, a resolution of the Twilla City Council amending the Twilla City fee schedule to include increased water meter cost, presented by Jamie Grandprey, the Public Works Director.
Good evening, council. This resolution comes to you tonight to raise the costs for a water meter that we collect. The, over the last year, costs for meters are increasing, and so we're bringing this back as those costs have now increased a little bit more. And so in the resolution, you'll see what we're currently charging for meters and what the new fee would be for those. And so for just, for reference, like a 1-inch meter, which is kind of the most common, it's going from 455 to 484, which is about a 6% increase. It's a 10% increase for inch and a half and 2-inch, and 7% increase for the 3, 4s and 6s. And so this resolution is to make that change, and most of these costs get put over to the builder to pay for, so it's just a pass-through type of cost. But we need to make sure that we collect enough to pay the cost of the meter so that our residents have, don't have to cover that cost. So with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments?
Makes sense.
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-84, amending the Twilla City fee schedule to include increased water meter costs.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 10 is Resolution 2025-85, a resolution of the Twilla City Council authorizing the sale of Lot 13 of the ranch at Pine Canyon Subdivision to Celtic Bank Corporation under the terms of the prior agreement dated November 7, 2019, presented by John Perez, the Economic Development Director.
Good evening, council. Yes, so this is an agreement authorizing the sale of the Pine Canyon property. So you'll see in the first part of the resolution, it's referring to an agreement that took place with you, the council, in 2019, November in 2019. And you'll see that it states, and that's Exhibit A in your packet, you'll see it states on item number 16 in that agreement, it says about a right of first refusal, and then it goes into the purchase price shall be the fair market value. So that, this was appraised again the end of September of this year. So it appraised for $360,000, and then you see, it says minus the sum of $75,000 of the improvements that were made, and then minus an additional 15%. And then that brings it down to $242,250. And then the agreement was also, was $2,000 to get it appraised, and we agreed to split that. So then that brings it to $243,250. So that's, you know, the final price according to this agreement and the appraisal that just occurred. And then I think there might have been some confusion or some misunderstanding to where was water included in the deal. So how it works, you know, with the appraiser is that it's assumed that the utilities, which include water, are there or accessible. And you'll see in Exhibit B, I believe it's on page 38, it even, it states, just for an example, it states, 38, it states right in there, adjustment factors, utilities readily available for development on or near the site. And then also, if you go on to the county assessors page, you can also see the assessed value and how it is assuming that water is already there. And then this would close with title right around the middle of December.
Okay, any questions or comments?
It was a very thorough appraisal.
Yeah. See, and you know what? That's called best practices, right? I think, you know, in the previous times, there may have been another property advisor that was being used, but you know what? Sometimes you got to look for some new blood, right? You know, get something innovative. That's what we did.
Good job.
Okay, any other questions or comments? It's a piece of land that we don't need anymore, so...
You, I'm, I'm, you might be a little bit jealous, right?
Beautiful lots out there, yeah. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-85, a resolution of the Twilla City Council authorizing the sale of Lot 13 of the ranch at Pine Canyon Subdivision to Celtic Bank Corporation under the terms of the prior agreement dated November 7, 2019.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goaches and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 11, invoices and purchase orders, presented by Shiloh Baker, the City Recorder.
Good evening, council. We have three invoices to present to you tonight for consideration. The first is a 2008 Freightliner dump truck with plow from Kate Machinery Company in the amount of $41,000. We have the purchase of 702 95-gallon green trash containers from Rarig Pacific Company in the amount of $40,898.78. Those are your residential trash receptacles. And then we have two tea and green mowers. They are real masters for the golf course from turf equipment and irrigation in the amount of $134,811.20. Do you have any questions?
Are they replacing old mowers or...?
They are, the current mowers that they're using for the teas and greens will be moved to the fairways, and then the fairway mowers, I believed, are, one is not here now. I think they were being...
Are they being repurposed?
I don't know. I just know that these two are replacing the current tea and green, and the current ones that they're using are going to be moved to the fairway mowers.
I'm assuming they order them now so they have them in the spring?
They will need to order those now.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion we approve the invoices.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0.
Thank you. If I can, I'm just going to wish Dave a happy birthday this evening.
Happy birthday. Okay, item 12 are the minutes from October 15th, 2025 work meeting and the October 15th, 2025 business meeting. I thought they looked great.
Yeah, I move that we approve the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilwoman Goaches. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. And item 13 is to adjourn at 8:06 PM.